The open course of the meeting, uh, there is nothing to report out of the closed portion. I do not motion to open the meeting. Second, all favor, very. Okay, uh, with that, we'll, we'll open it up, uh, so the purpose of this meeting is, is to discuss the budget and. Uh, the part one, as, as it's being referred to is the core or base study. Uh, we'll have an orientation to the budget that will be presented by Joe Turcoff, uh, be questions to clarify the budget and the process. Uh, council will take it away and uh, ruminate on it for a couple of weeks and then we'll return January twenty third. To another committee of the whole, uh, to dive into the supplemental budget. So, uh, with that.
Can you to include the regular council?
I may, would be, uh, yes, to be deferred to, uh, referred to the regular company, but we will have a January twenty third. Committee of the whole, is that, uh, when you were suggesting?
This, thank you. So these dates have to be approved by council if council so chooses. So staff is proposing, just to put a finer point on this, that today is just a budget download or, or orientation to the budget and the five year plan. Uh, the goal here is to set council up to be able to wade through the documents. Uh, the fi- the, the financial plan process will be comprised of two components. Part A will be the base budget or core budget, which is what you referred to. The second component are the supplementals, those are the extras that are typically, uh, um. Um, project oriented, but not exclusively. Some are capital, some are operational. Um, that component will be dealt with in a separate meeting. And then the, the, a council, a committee of the whole following that will be a discussion by council of both of those budgets amalgamated. And that will sort of start to define what a tax rate increase might look like, if there is one. Um, and what the spending priorities are, that will then allow council staff to go away, uh, and. Uh, plan their projects, allow the fire department to start planning what he can spend with things like turnout gear and on and on and on. Uh, what else could I tell them about that? So as I say, today is just basically to orient. Give you two weeks to, to, to vet this. One week after that, or after, after that two weeks, one week after that will be a deep dive into the base budget. To get some sort of tentative direction from council on that base budget, a week after that ideally would be this, this such a little supplemental. And a week after that, another committee of the whole to consolidate those two, but those are what staff is proposing, except to council.
Um, I was just getting back and approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Um. Because we have next year.
Right.
Agenda is, um, and my comment before we approve the agenda, see we got delegations here, we don't have the public participation, assuming too. They have some public participation.
Uh, I don't, unfortunately forgot to print the agenda off, I don't have it.
So we, we should vary the event, probably participation. Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, why don't we look at the agenda, approve the agenda. Okay, we'll add a public participation, we have no delegation, is my understanding.
Correct.
We'll add the public participation, two minutes.
We can relieve one of the internet, one of the.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't know.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
As I mentioned, yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
All favor.
Yeah.
Both carry. Okay, uh, so any questions to Mr. Blackwell's explanation of the presentations and supplemental meetings?
I, I think the, the idea or the structure of. I'm doing, it's bite sized chunks and putting them together, I think that makes sense. Um, as to the meeting, when we're gonna have those meetings, um, it's like, yeah. Some, uh, some personal constraints on some of those, um, but I, I, I like, I'm okay with the idea of the way you're describing us broadly, I can give my understanding.
Great. So are you planning to distribute just a, a little bit of a schedule that we could?
It's in the, uh, presentation that I'll be going through.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good.
It's in your binder, uh, the, the, do you have a process schedule as, uh? You go down one.
Okay, before we jump in, why don't we go to the public for the, uh, presentate, or presentation. Uh, Marina, if you'll open it up, anyone that they have a question? Okay, if anyone in the gallery would like to ask a question, uh, now would be a good time.
I don't have anybody with hands up.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll move, uh, right on.
Can you give us, I can make a suggestion, it's a little, it's a little, it's formal, but, uh. Maybe you can keep it terms of anyone that joins at seven, we'll take five minutes at seven for the same year and having participation, because people might be coming soon.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Joe, how are you?
Absolutely, I'm presenting, he's the last of the.
Okay.
Oh, okay, present on screen, is this your binder, that's yours?
Oh, okay, pass that up.
Andrew, before you start, can I have a few questions? So we have an agenda and you're handing things out here, what, what are we referencing off of? Because I'm going off the agenda package.
Yes, so, um, the, uh, the first tab in your binder here is just what's gonna be on the presentation format for the, uh, first part of session. Um, perhaps what you have in your, uh, budget or your package for the meeting starts on page two. And then page numbers at the top refer exactly back to what's in the, uh, meeting.
So what you're gonna be presenting will follow logically page number wise with the package, guys, okay?
Yeah, it hasn't changed from last. No, no changes from last, okay.
May, may I ask a question? Are we gonna share the screen there? So everyone in the gallery, see your presentation?
Yeah, I just need to find the mouse, uh, I was just curious. And, uh, I will, I go through.
Don't let this chair there on that show. Should be simple, there's a wider. I'm sorry, oh, sorry.
Oh, you might, that'd get us them on.
They're worse. Trying to do it. Sorry.
That's fine. Um, Marina, can, uh, you enable, uh, my screen share?
Um, give me a second here. Are you li- uh, signed in as a host or?
Well, that's, well, um, if I'm not both currently, because host has disabled for extended screen sharing.
One second.
So while we're looking at that, Joe, so. There is also additional information that was by, that was not in the package, because we have these are various kind of supplemental committees and so.
That's correct, so that was her. What?
My, my question was, is this all gonna be somehow released to the public the next meeting or? Can, can this, is that what it is?
So if I could, through the chart.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, all of this information, so, so the, 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 this is your budget work, workbook. It is for the purpose of marking up and yada, 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 to, so you have a physical, uh, sort of, um. Uh, um, I can't, uh, somewhere to look at the physical, uh.
Binder?
No, a sort of a physical tool, tool to use to, to work through this stuff, so you can pull pages.
Uh, you know what, that's fabulous, next time. If, uh, let us know, or, or we'll, we'll be aware, that will print it up. Or at least I don't.
Through the chair. Joe, can you, um, should do the screen share now?
Thanks for the binder, looks great.
So with that, that's just primarily just for, for you guys, but the information that you needed available to, uh, the community. On the website.
Something was.
All of it, yeah.
Starting, uh, on, uh. Tab one, uh, this is the PowerPoint presentation.
So Joe, you can minimize that, uh. They'll, they could write here, there you go.
Uh, so this is the, uh, presentation, uh, and orientation for the twenty twenty four budget and five year plan. Um, let's go through the talking points and overall have summary, um, in these next few slides. And then in, starting in tab two, going through the operational budgets, um, uh, for twenty twenty four. So overview, we'll be talking about useful requirements, I mean, about new process, uh, even process, operating capital budget. The capital budget flyer plan and code budget impact. The beginning with useful requirements, uh, we're required to adopt a new budget and apply your financial plan for May fifteenth of each year. As per the community charter, uh, we make the public time consultation, uh, there's various avenues towards public consultation, uh, we do still have the, uh. Uh, budget at lines Bay dot C A, uh, email address available for, uh, anybody that would like to comment or provide, uh. Or ask questions about the budget. And then, uh, our other one is to adapt, uh, adopt tax rates that I law for only fifteenth annually, according to the, uh, community charter. Uh, this graphic also, uh, shows how your, how the, um, taxes that we collect are distributed between. Uh, money that are put up, comes taxed, uh, and utilized by the village versus, um, items that we collect on the app or other ministries. Uh, school, obviously, is a large majority of that. Transline and, I feel it's kind of small, and then police tax, um, that are a big one. So we only really get, um, uh, forty six percent of that's the in, in certain, like, nine, and we go. Uh, for us, and then everything else goes to other, uh, quarters.
So it was, because of what's that? The school is the yellow line?
School is yellow, yeah, one point one nine million. Uh, for me, just the, from the others. But when I can't really see all the colors.
No, 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 no.
Thank you, thank you, definitely, that's, looks big enough, a lot of the parts, the type of, you know, the name and. Hmm, yeah, yeah, I can, uh, that'll be helpful. Remise that.
By the way, if it could, uh, one of the key thing asks I would have, this is, uh, council as a whole. Uh, this is, we're shifting away from past practice to sort of a new way of doing this, our, so this, we're in middle ground now. We expect to fine tune it again for, for next year. But we would appreciate all the feedback we can receive, not only from council, but from the community with regard to how effective. Uh, this is what's working, what's not working, so we can fine tune and make it better for next year. So bear that in mind as, as we go through this, I would appreciate that, thank you.
So going back to, going to, uh, the question posed earlier about, uh, budget funding. Um. We started meetings, not, not, uh, various departments and having senior staff meetings to discuss, um, operational budgets and capital requests. Um. Where we're at now is January, not the, uh, primary budget, so the committee of the whole, uh, for, um, orientation and, uh. Uh, preparation for our next meeting, a committee of the whole, one where we dive into the operational budget. Uh, and it's not closed, uh, at current, ever the twenty third, which is a counting date, that would be the nineteenth. Um, I don't believe that there are any other, uh, community meetings on that page, and so this session would be. After having a couple of weeks to review the twenty twenty four budget, um. Finding your feedback, comments, or incorporation on the next version.
Sorry, Joe, in the package, where is that page?
That is, um, tab one.
Seven, so fifteen million four. Okay.
Uh, and then that would all be called up with the, uh, the next, uh, session, uh, would be committee of the whole. And that'll be reviewing budget supplementals, which, um, are new asks in the year, primarily reflect, um, reflect, um, reflecting capital requests. Uh, there are some operational items as well, um, but we'd like to, uh, separate operational and, uh, you know, specifically capital requests or supplementals. Such that, um, we're building up to a final budget, and this gives everybody, uh, a digestible piece of information to process and provide comments on.
If I could. So, um. As I was, what I had mentioned earlier is a little bit different than this, what I was mentioning, mentioning is what I would propose to council, which is a more compressed timeline. So these, uh, other than the first chunk of time, which is a two week, uh, opportunity to sort of wade into the budget overall. Following that, my recommendation for the purposes of staying current with this information is hit three committee of the wholes each week after that. That's what I'm suggesting, it's up to council to tell you which, how you want to go about it. But the purpose is to ensure that there is continuity in the process, if you leave it too long, things can sort of. Disappear into the, into the mists a little bit.
So, uh, compressed schedules, so what kind of dates are you proposing? We got, you got a proposal here to meet on the nineteenth.
So one people to Friday.
So what I was proposing earlier was, uh, what was the date again? Uh, the. Uh, uh, um, when is it, the, the, the?
Twenty twenty, the next meeting.
So, yeah. So it would be on that day or around that day, but it would be, so that'd be two weeks and then three meetings after that. Each week following.
So we've already got a compressed schedule then, because we have a special. Uh, schedule in January, we'll be reverting to first and third, I think in February, right? So we're already tight, so what, what dates are you proposing from?
Well, I'm not proposing any yet, I'm just gonna see if there's an appetite to compress it, and then we can shop dates around to see. Uh, if there's an appetite to do it, then it would shop dates around to see what works for council, to figure out what.
Around the twenty second. Or the twenty third time is kind of busy, we were. Climate action committee meeting on the twenty second, or, maybe council meeting twenty third, and then each block meeting on the twenty fourth. And then we have IC meeting on the Thursday before on the eighteen. So, actually, we'll try this in the weekends, it's kind of all meetings in a row, so I was gonna thought if you wanna have a. Compressed schedule, you should have one like a week tonight, if you want to, probably something earlier, but leaning to that make, it's gonna be pretty difficult.
If I could. Thank you. So my recommendation to council was that these budget discussions should take precedent over committee meetings, I would park those. Uh, in favor of getting your budget done, so that. Uh, folks like public works and fire and so forth can go up, can, can, can do their work. Otherwise, for every week that passes, they're on hold with regard to the, the, the projects that have been identified in here. So, uh, again, I would encourage sort of parking those committee meetings for the, for this month. Possibly early February, uh, in, in favor of committee of the whole meetings to deal with this, but it's up to council hours, if you wish to do it. The reason I propose this, by the way, is because I've been down this road many times, and when you're dealing with more complicated matters, it's good to keep them. Tight together, rather than too much time in between. Big stretch over time. It's up to council.
Okay, thanks for that explanation, maybe you can send us out, uh, an email and, and we can just, sure. Either confirm, we can make it a recount, or throw some suggestions that might be more effective. All right, okay, the next page. Um, this, we, we're operating budget in something. Um, with comparison of either operating budget actions. Um, move back to twenty nineteen, um, and twenty twenty two. Actually, we have, uh, we have closed off December. Uh, so taxation, uh, we'll start with taxation, uh, which incorporates, um, status quo of base budget is, uh, same as last year, six percent increase. Uh, similar with utility fees and rates, so five percent, um, increase throughout the board, uh, anything from past year. Uh, so this would be, um, where we wanna move, um, if we wanna move, uh, those rates, it's up for discussion, uh, in our next meeting. Uh, next meetings of the whole, uh, right now, this is just present where we're at, at the base budget, and then, uh, we fine tune it based on council's recommendations. But, uh, the whole recommendations. Um, we have grass, uh, coming in, there are, tied to, um, we'll go into further detail when we go through each, um. Uh, this is primarily, uh, stop. I truly didn't like money to where the lack of the park project, uh, the, uh, cloud volume renovation and a few other, uh, festival projects. Other, uh, review of going to detail on what that, I was that. Um, and then your various expenditure amounts, um, which ends up, uh, in overall these departments in detail. Uh, with an ending surplus or deficit at, uh, current, uh. Base budget increases for, uh, property tax and, um, utility rates, uh, they generate to be seven thousand dollars. When the buyer operating.
You should just be kind of right. Right, literally, kind of right.
At current. So, um, for capital project, I'm also going to, uh, public works, um, comprises majority of where we, um, look to spend our, uh, where, where quite come from. Uh, and I'm also at three point seven million dollars, uh, protective services, uh, which, uh, that covers fire, the fire department primarily. Um, is one point five million and then administrative items, uh, one million dollars, we'll go into specific detail, but comprises each of these, um, slides.
Can I just ask, well, then, going back to the operating use, the, the, the twenty twenty four operating, you, you assumed the same tax increases.
Yes.
Some extra percent and five.
Five and five.
Five and five.
Uh, in our, in our next meeting, uh, I'll have, uh, the, uh, twenty twenty four budget in Excel, um, uh. Right up there, and then we can play with different rates, so that maybe can.
And it's, yeah.
So just going at the brief overview, again, without losing detail, um, and also the supplementals. Um, so it'll be high priority identified items for, uh, capital project, who, who are the, uh, lines they each part. Uh, which we, uh, are, uh, working on and hoping to hopefully quickly this by this, uh, summer. Uh, the services, fire department available to the, uh, super job. Uh, uh, with an estimated cost of one point three million dollars. Public works as a high prior, priority item for highway tank replacement with an expected cost of a million dollars. And then SCADA equipment updates, low van V zone meters for two hundred and five thousand, these have been identified items, we need to do this, uh, now.
Question, why, why the clap only going on that list?
Clap is, um, on a low priority as far as, um, it's.
So if I could, so these are indicative. Organizations, high medium and low priorities, they were identified as staff level based on two criteria, criterion, criteria.
Two.
Uh. Level of risk and degree of probability that that risk will materialize. So based on that as a general framework, staff, uh, vetted their items and they were ranked accordingly. This is not in, in any way fixed, it's just trying to take a stab at organizing these. Uh, and in as priority categories, once that committee of the whole for supplementals comes up. All of these things are gonna be moving back and forth, you know, you saw, you may pop a low priority item from a staff perspective. You may pop that to the front of the pack, because there are other emergent issues, so this is not carved in stone, it's just meant as an organizing tool.
You say risk, is this risk to public safety?
Uh, different kinds of risk, s- some is, is, is life safety, some is risk of losing a grant, or whatever.
Wouldn't the glad building qualify and alleviate you in, in terms of the risk of losing, losing?
Yeah, uh, as they say, this is not carved in stone, I mean, these things are, I can't, I mean, we're gonna talk about, uh, what's, what each. Department head is gonna supposedly talk about, uh, give a brief overview of each supplemental, but, um, if you got. I mean, now is not the time you necessarily have to worry about moving these into any category, this is just for organization.
I'm just curious, I don't know why it was organized.
I'm not sure, I can't speak to, to the.
That's helpful to understand, yeah. So the, the clap building is funded and, and we lose the funding, so I think so. Probably a long agreement, it's pretty.
Yeah, well, if I can, um, you know, if I was given, uh, the option to do two projects only, uh, one project only out of two.
Yeah.
It would not be the clap building, it would be the highway tank replacement.
Mm-hmm.
So when I and, and Joe used my, uh, impact of, I. The impact of not having the clap building done is a one out of three, and the risk is, uh, of not having a clap building is, is low. From my perspective, it's a low priority project, if I only had, uh, learned to grease this and buy it, and. So that's, that's how it ended up where it ended up, that's not to say that's council's priority at all, these, these are.
But it's, but it's funded, so it's confusing.
Well, again, this is just staff's way of trying to tease this guy up, it's not.
Okay, that's, that's good, I think we all, finally, I think it goes higher off the list, uh, as well, but, um.
But, but it's, it's, it's all understandable.
Okay.
That's, that's great.
In the line, Joe? Sure, uh, medium, I, uh, preliminary supplement, uh, or requests, um, it'll be, oh, sorry. Uh, public works, uh, so with the clap building as an addition, uh, Nedermaier system and the amount of eighty thousand dollars. Um, that was not included in the original grant application, so it would be an extra cost.
Uh, just for clarification, that's an exhaust renewable system?
A very expensive one. Some hoses and a cage and a van.
And some magnets.
Holy shit, holy shit.
All these needle mile people, they.
Yeah, we gotta get it on there.
Daniel, share. Do you wanna, Joe? Uh, I have some services, uh, roller trays, indoors, rent sixty three, um, included a side by side, yeah, uh, for tech access. Uh, twenty five thousand, uh, end mountain drainage, uh, twenty five thousand, land baby's part floating dock, fifty thousand. Uh, survey design of stormwater road and water mains on Oceanview Road, four hundred and fifty, and then a pH adjustment to finished water for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, these are, um, included in the, uh, supplementals of the, uh, starting on page ten, uh, or cap ten of your package. And then low priority, uh, currently, um, N C B A equipment, uh, for, that, uh, that fire department is asking, uh, we've got. Every old one, needs to be replaced, like a god, light cutters for spreaders for fire, a command vehicle for, uh, fire. We just.
Pause them out, command vehicle, isn't that the, the pickup truck, if you spell thing a little, two years ago?
Uh, there's a request, uh, for, um, I don't know about that one, I believe that's from public works, they're asking for one that's like, uh, that could also be a people mover. Uh, for, uh, volunteer fire.
That's good.
If I could, I think that'll be explained in the supplementals.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, some, uh, furniture and equipment for, uh, as an administrative house, um, and. Cloud volume renovation, that's, uh, we spoke about, uh, some more, uh, and headwater drainage projects, the chemical project, we're putting out a fine signage. Four hundred and twenty nine thousand, the pride trail, uh, rebuild for seventy thousand, which is a hundred percent, uh, I'm saying grant funded by Moti. Uh, and, uh, initial intake, um, of course. So I just, quick, would, would it be helpful to understand what the grant portion of that is, just so we? When we're looking at, uh, chart, you want, that low priority and almost five hundred thousand, but a large portion of that is driven by grant? Is it, is it worth? Or that, maybe you dive in that deeper later. Uh, yeah, that is, that is just plain, uh, and the assessment that, I don't know, but the official methods.
Well, now that, there is a, Joe, what open you in operation budgets, it doesn't say, since you do grant funding, and it can't be received, you're not sure, average, you, it's actually, yeah. religious.
What I can, uh, do, uh, subsequent version of this is, uh, I mean, this is again, uh, we probably reuse this as we retool it, but, um, I call it near to identify that's, um. Been reserved for prior, um, uh, we have happened for, was to make it currently.
As well as, as well as, as well as your end funding.
Yeah.
So your other sheet you got, what was previously funded, and, 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 I'm not sure how I understand it, but if, what it doesn't say is, how much is.
That'll be, yeah, uh, that would, I mean, definitely, and that does dock the element next to the size where we talk about funding on this. For capital projects, uh, funding, we'll be, uh, options around increasing property tax, drawing from our reserves. Debt financing or a combination of give up. So if we did not draw on, or if there was any new debt and purely funded in the current capital asks. Uh, through a property tax increase, uh, it would require a two hundred and forty nine percent increase in property taxes to pay for those, uh, through taxation. Which I don't think anybody has now anymore. So other options include use of a reserves, um, uh, which, uh, uh, we have built up, or debt financing through the municipal finance authority.
May may I just question? Could you give us a dollar value of what a two hundred and forty-nine percent increase in property taxes would look like on average per household? Just for public understanding of what that would actually be? And myself included?
Yeah, no, no, no problem. Anything. Yeah. I I I I will show um what a one percent increase in property taxes per household equals about twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Um so you can multiply that out by two hundred and fifty percent and I'll give you that idea. But um I I I'm sorry, I didn't um do um.
What's the numbers, Joe? Here, let me uh calculate this for you on the fly.
Twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents for one thousand, one percent increase in taxes.
Times.
Hundred and forty.
Two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, per.
Seven thousand, three hundred and sixty.
Per household. Okay, on top of what we're paying already.
Yeah.
And that's just to, that's that's funding all of these projects through property taxation only.
Yeah.
So this is just a, is it just to give you a sort of a a s- a sticker shot? Associated with the magnitude of the issues. Staff's not proposing that we do this.
Oh, no, 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 I I I completely understand that. It's just good to have a dollar figure instead of.
Yeah.
To see that my property taxes are gonna go up by seven grand perhaps next year?
No, it's just that.
There, no, but potentially if we had no other options, it's good to understand the actual cost. Of funding, running, and operating all of these things. So thank you for that. Math on the fly.
If you're gonna expand it, might as well put less grants on it.
Something doesn't quite add up, I mean.
Yes, times five hundred and forty-eight hours.
Yes, people said, then much. Six months, but anyway, try. The bigger number on that.
Uh big number. So um just to test that, I didn't, I, you know, there's a nap out of our reserves.
One of the other times off is a lot of these two tracks, right?
Yeah. It's um yeah. Um so this slide uh shows uh these are our an estimate of our reserves at the current year end. Uh we have a capital reserve of one point five million, uh land reserve of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. Or two, thirty point three million dollars in statutory reserves. A statutory or an statutory reserve, uh our Achilles surplus have been set aside by decision of council for specific purpose. The capital and land reserves um are set by bylaw. Um the non-statutory reserves, uh we have the gas tax reserve, uh which has been accumulating over a period of time. Our last payment. Um for that gas tax came in uh March of this year. Um so that funding stream ended and we expect to use it to for some purpose um in the coming. And then we have climate action, uh uh monies that have come in. Um either for carrot or the LG cap programs, um I identify those and break up that and then Curly Stewart um. So these are reserve funds and effectively we have approximately six million dollars, uh some making one dollars in cash at the moment. With that represents is items that, you know, cash that we have on, we haven't spent, that we reserve or we haven't spent yet. Um then we have the unrestricted surplus, which will be able uh or not designated for two point uh two million dollars. So uh just when we're thinking about how we're gonna pay for stuff, um that's something we pay for all of it or a portion of it. Um uh we can draw on the service.
Joe, where does that unrestricted figure come from?
Uh that is uh from our financial uh uh financial statements, uh it's going on the I. At twenty twenty-two plus an estimate for what uh twenty twenty-three will look like.
But in terms of this table here, it it is. Uh uh how how's it put together? The two point oh eight two?
It's basically, do we look at our annual financial statements?
Yeah.
Um there's a table that shows all of our restricted reserves plus um our uh uh unrestricted. But made an estimate of what composition will be restricted and. Be a particular rather than.
So is it up to you, people now?
Yes.
Give one little.
I guess what I'm asking is what in the items above contributes to the two point oh eight two? Say, what items are sequestered out of that?
Oh, nothing in the above. Above is a breakdown of the three point one.
Yeah.
Which are statutory and non-statutory reserves. Uh two million dollars, uh unrestricted reserve.
Mm hmm.
It's just on top of it.
Okay. Alright.
Uh Joe, can I ask, is that, does that represent uh budgeted approved budgeted items from prior years that were were underspent or unexpected?
Yes, um and it does. Uh and uh there's a year-end adjustment, uh when you do our financial year-end close, uh where we um I. Do adjustments to uh classify items that have increased the tax form and moved into our reserve. Uh we haven't done our financial year-end close yet.
Does that number include that or is that?
It doesn't include that. So the report from that um will allocate some uh uh to uh what we tax for, uh versus not with spent. That will either into uh.
Probably going to it. Okay, well, that's that's arithmetic. So does that mean that if a project isn't delivered in the budget year that it was approved for? And this this past year, the budget was approved pretty often through the year? That goes away? Can we start from zero again?
Uh no, it depends. I guess is the best way I can say it. Uh for instance, the um the cloud, uh the cloud. It was a hundred percent grant funded, so almost presented in the budget. There's a capital cost of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. And then there is a grant of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. It's all at zero. So we don't tax it, I just, there was zero. Um for the turnout here, well, was other slide for the fire truck. It was uh here.
So that four ninety-nine is in the unrestricted surplus.
No, so that was not only that, for instance, it was a net zero. We didn't tax it, it was.
Yeah, it ran as a grant and is it in that number, the two million dollars?
That's not it. Not the cloud.
Okay, good. Using only, so if we started to buy something, we didn't do it. Would that now be sitting in the unrestricted surplus?
Depends is the easiest answer. Uh there's a, so I want to get ahead of everything here. So I um had some discussions about, okay, well, what's sitting in this number? Um there are some items that will be adjusted at year-end to the capital reserve. Uh to give a fair number, but there's year-end reconciliation that we did to clean this up. It hasn't been done yet because we've just finished off December.
So previously, we used to talk about something rebudgeted, if you really tax for it once, we didn't spend it, we still want to spend it, we want to do it this year.
Yeah.
We used to use the rebudget.
Oh, for.
Well, and now, as comments, the question, I'm not clearing my mind, is is something is being rebudgeted. Is it part of this the surplus folder or is it something else?
It could be both. Um so I again, I don't want to get into the weeds on this. But what I'm trying to present here for with the capital requests are on a more on a cash basis. This is what we're gonna be asked to pay in the term here. Where we offset that.
We used to register it, we're getting much money you ought to spend, and I was finding something, you know, flat, you know, fat wallets.
It'd be there, I think, as far as just the the digesting this, um and say, okay, well. Here's what the ask is. Enough of getting money out the door if we pay for it all. This is how much cash we have. Where um I how much can that have? Can we spend is based on either getting your debt, taxation, or what you have in existing reserves. That's five point two million is the reserves. That two million, which is unrestricted surplus, maybe came after the year-end adjustments, they go a bit lower as we allocate. Some to the capital reserve based on items that have been rebudgeted or already taxed for. Um uh but the your total really in the reserves isn't changed, it's more by point two million dollars.
Okay. Joe, that climate action number, the code here, either. From the numbers that's on your later in this thing, the hotel every weekend, it really includes something other than just the LG cap money. Is that, do you see, we can find along to that or something?
Um I'll get to that um when we go through.
Okay, because it'll be a number than what you had in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'll I'll go through that right now. So um our uh capital uh fund uh reserve is increasing here by the ten percent levy. Uh infrastructure levy um and the capital reserves can get maybe to be around twenty million at the this current year end after we finish the financial close. Um looking at five-year plan for infrastructure costs, um it's approximately twenty million dollars in capital expenditure. Uh again, capital expenditures with our uh combination of grant funding, debt, and reserve management. The limited borrowing is limited by, uh we wanted to borrow as an avenue for funding. Um uh limited by carrying the annual debt service costs, uh principal interest to a maximum twenty percent of our eligible municipal revenue. Um basically, which comprised of taxes, unconditional grants, and payments and move taxes. So our current debt service cost per year is two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um our estimated debt service limit is nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So as an example, we wanted to borrow five million dollars from the municipal finance authority to complement capital projects. Um our debt service would increase um over a thirty-year outization period by three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
We just.
Ten million, that'll be the door. Um the MFA actually says, from the, where but it's all in that, it's uh one was suggesting how to um. Fund a new uh fire truck. Uh but the MFA provides a worksheet that you can basically plug in a number for your amortization period or borrowing period. Um how much you want to borrow and it'll spit out basically what your debt service cost is, uh across can prove it not, it's quite easy to use and find what.
We're sitting here before seven and see if anyone in the joint later wanted to do sales, they will go to screen up soon.
Anybody in the gallery like ask a question? We started debating the open portion a little early, so we moved past the question period. Anyone?
I'm not bothered with your talking.
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
Question about what? So we we bypassed the two-minute question period because we started the meeting at about six twenty.
I wanna have that to be this because.
By you want, okay. Then. We can't see in the gallery, but in the gallery, we'll we'll uh go to you after we. Uh online gallery, we'll go to you for any questions in a moment. Uh first, we'll have campus. So is that okay, please?
First of all, I have to say, thank you so much for whatever you have done last year for Lions Bay. And. It's more than one and one month that I I'm coming over here and back back just for the for the case that you know what I'm talking about. As she said, that it takes four to six weeks. Uh just establish it for the uh party committee. But it's it's right about fourteen weeks, nothing gathered. I I have, I would like to ask the question that if anyone is against of that, a party committee, please let us know and buy. But if you are not against of that, nobody says anything. Does. Thank you so much. But when you are gonna, I know that this is in the agenda, but it it has come up today. Uh under change and talking with the other council. When you are gonna do that, that the uh nine, the the party committee will be established. When and how?
We call the task force of the staff, we call the task force and it was ninety, a maximum ninety days and from that we would uh we would.
The ninety days have gone.
I don't know.
Now, the the problem is, uh if it's gonna be ninety days from now, uh it's a it's medicine after the. Uh ill people has died because. They are starting to coming over there. Please do it as soon as possible. Also, I was talking with the gentleman, Mr. C E O, that he said that he's making a few silent, yes? Is it ready to to establish it?
Uh it's with Public Works right now.
How long does it take? It takes about one or two days.
I would have to get back to you on that. I would have to get back to you to find out what the.
Please call me. Thank you so much. Because when you are gonna, you need to build a month, that one month that you talk. And it takes about two, three days to make it once uh silent, but why it takes time?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot for staff to do every single day.
Yes, tell me, I will to fix it for you.
And there's a, just to let you know, you've got about ten seconds and then we're gonna move on to the next.
The ten second is when we are gonna have that public uh uh party committee that everybody knows, I know the volunteers want to come up, I just.
You just said, it's just the task force will make a recommendation to council about moving forward on that. It's it, the ninety days has knocked off, as I recall, somewhere in the middle of December, maybe late December.
Yeah, is it possible that if we have it, it's on mid February, because the people is calling.
The task committee will decide that in which you're a part of. So, Kevin, as we're gonna move on to the next candidate, because we've got a lot of things to cover this evening. Thank you for your questions.
And I thank you so much that nobody has objection about uh public comment. Thank you so much. All the council.
Uh Marina, any other questions from the online gallery?
Please let me know if you need help.
I don't have any hands up at this time.
Okay, um back to Mr. Cherkov.
Good chat to you, Joe. Keep sending those.
Alright, so um with the base budget, uh moving tax with that six percent increase in property taxes, we need about a hundred and seven dollars. Um for how uh average per household increase would be twenty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Um or uh so we raise it to to seven percent or decrease to five percent uh in the base budget. And the per household impact would be twenty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Um and that's based on preliminary role, um household that is valuable, uh two point one million dollars. Water easer rates, through rates, solid waste rates, represent five percent increases, as similar to last year. And then the exact level is. Ten percent of property tax. Go ahead. So on the five-year plan, uh twenty twenty-four revenue is projected, made under the budget. At the six million dollars, um reflects six percent increase in property tax and a five percent increase in utilities. Um and one percent increase in property tax equals about seventeen thousand. Um eight hundred and forty-six dollars in total or twenty-nine dollars per household. And the decrease in twenty twenty-five revenue, these rent revenue. Twenty twenty-four is approved funding for the uh cloud building renovation in Lions Bay Beach Park for land revitalization. Um expenditures, net increase of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars over last year's budget. Um primarily related to an increase in amortization, um uh a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars based on our that title capital. So uh funding schedule, that's the non-tax expense. Public Works increases of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in corporate addition costs for bridge maintenance. Uh Public Works costs of a hundred and ninety thousand for general maintenance and contract engineering services. And a parks increase of about um ninety-eight thousand dollars for cost for the jetty maintenance. Capital requests, six point three million in the current year, seven point seven million in following year. Um primarily related to um a new uh an ask for a new uh upper engine for the fire department. Uh cost the line baby program revitalization, note that it's a hundred percent grant funded. Or that is grant funded, um cloud billing, which is uh grant funded. Highway tank run replacement, which is new, uh for a million dollars. Water mains, watering, water and watering connector project for two million dollars. And then in twenty twenty's live, they cost is for water mains and drainage. So that that includes the summary, uh and the most important, starting on page two of our cap, we will go into the um our mental, everybody mind?
So you're going to skip the later?
I am going, yeah, schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
Skip the lane. So this provides the five-year summary. We're prepared in discussing and reviewing twenty twenty-four. And we found through a high level, these items in the previous orientation slides in the PowerPoint. So we'll be going through each of these items on a departmental level basis and starting in tab three. This is just basically a consolidation of departmental revenues and expenses, capital expenditure requests. So they can see, oh, oh, this guy global, they have a goal, the numbers are trending. Welcome to, we'll start off with our revenue.
So the infrastructure levy should be ten percent of taxation, right? So in column twenty, twenty-three and four, that number should be a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
So the, and I, I do understand why you asked that question. So the taxation number is actually one hundred, one twenty-nine million. What includes, included in this presentation is the taxation number, there's the grants in LUL. Probably a tax, taxation in LUL, it's about forty or fifty thousand dollars. So I can show you this slide, everyone get to the next slide.
Taxation in LUL.
Yes, we get the money from. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there you go, into taxation, actually, we.
Yeah, yeah, I can analyze, you can see the breakdown, yes. So we'll start with revenue for departments. So our budget for, for general, municipal taxes, there's one point nine one million, which is a hundred and seven thousand dollars or a six percent increase over the prior year. Infrastructure levy is exactly ten percent of that, and then this payments in lieu of taxes on the previous slide. If you work down, that's, that's that difference where you're trying to see that percentage. Water and sewer, solid waste rates are all based on a five percent increase.
Can we, can I ask questions as we go along, Jenny prefer, or do you want to get into a slide or?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna go to the fly, or if you'd like to present everything afterwards, if you have some time to digest.
Well, yes, there's some, they speak when you, when you see them, they come up. How does the taxation is actual, in twenty twenty-three go up? By two hundred thousand dollars that we have new properties?
No, no, so it's, it's actually in three hundred dollars of our actual budget. There's a year-end adjusting entries that we put through. They have to have them processed because we have them closed off.
Okay, so it's not just affecting you, it becomes also adjustments.
Yeah, no, but the taxation budget is based on, so when you'll see, when we do our financial statements, after we process all of our year-end adjustments, is actual property taxes of this number plus minus three hundred bucks, which is consistent with every single year, there are, there are some year-end adjustments we need to process. And so this number is based on this number plus six percent.
So we should expect the actual to be closer to one point seven before one, not two.
Pretty much exactly, one point seven, after we process our year-end adjustments. But throwing in the twenty-three actuals up to November, we have closed off the, we have processed December yet. It just went in there, maybe some basis to ask questions or have any of that. And that's also included in the November thirtieth budget actual package that I give to council on Friday.
And then just one other thing as we're going through, I'm, I'm looking at the weekend, seeing these notes, and I sent you an email on the weekend. I'm not, it's not clear to me which of these actuals are finalized between all the rules we expect to get, or which are still going to increase now between now and when we close the book. Or when the books close, of these actuals, we will.
There are actuals in November third, you don't process December or year end.
These are different to another, the one you've seen before, but all right. But the answer is you haven't got one on the December cost yet?
No.
Would you have one on November thirtieth?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So why are they different?
At different points in time, I've been presented, are prepared the November thirtieth package for council. Weeks ago, we did get the more November invoices and whatnot that we process. So that this one, for most recent pull down I can get from the honor of the county system.
So what stage in this budget in person, do we have the actions for it?
This is to, what's been processed to November thirty. And then you'll have like December closed off, but a couple of weeks from now. So that the actual represents basically what we have for actuals for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so when we go on the next time to look at it?
Yeah, basically.
Will we?
No, like, when we look at the budget versus actual, budget twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four. Mostly different changes in these items other than, it's a, geez. Other rentals, that's the. It's on, will be accumulated in twenty twenty-three. But we'll go through these and who else. Grants for twenty twenty-four, so we have a small community grant. Breakdown in the fortune, that's primarily the clap building, life they be part of, innovation. And then other grants, open that out as well. This will increase by seven thousand dollars in that burden for the multi-grant for the ride trail request.
So, so what we need to do, wasn't that, wasn't that the almost nothing, obviously, and you have gift to be expecting?
That was included in the I C, I P grants, the nine hundred ninety-eight thousand was. So this is one we get every single year.
So the nine hundred thousand is in which number?
In one point six four, or, no, sorry. Or, oh, other grants, sorry, it's a, an actual, twenty twenty-three actuals, it's sitting in other grants, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand.
But other brands is one oh nine, how can it be sitting in there?
No, this is twenty twenty-three.
If I could, I would wait till you get to your base budget before you start drilling down. This is just to orient you to what's on which page and so forth. So, because if you don't, you're gonna run out of time in this meeting.
But we got questions.
But just can I understand?
Yeah, just for orientation would be my recommendation.
Sure, but just to be clear, where, where, where's the million dollar grant?
It's in the one out of five, one. Because we got it out in twenty twenty. It wasn't in the budget.
Okay.
Going down to other revenue, two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars primarily to do with return, basically interest on savings. So, one for general municipal property taxes, because it has a tally analysis here. So if we do a zero percent increase in property tax, we get what we had last year, one point seven eight four million dollars. At six percent, just currently in folks budget. And that's amounts to one point eight nine one million dollars in property tax in total. And then we go on, up and up, now, dollar value increase and then dollar for home. So as far as our history, twenty twenty, we had a three percent increase in taxes. Twenty twenty-one, three percent increase, twenty twenty-two, six point five, and twenty twenty-three, six percent. Based on available lighting fine. Vancouver is proposing for twenty twenty-four, seven point six percent increase, property eight point one, coal on eight point nine, squalmers eight point nine, with three point two, and empty shelf nine point.
These are proposed, these are, these are not passed.
Infrastructure levy, again, ten percent of general municipal property tax, parcel tax, the rate we're up. And that's just straight numbers here. Payments and legal taxes related to the hydro, on tell us, now given in the general, is a little over line, with the original capitals. Utility rates, we are based by, it was five, five, five percent. We try very hard, which is what was happening in twenty twenty-three. Secondary suite fees, the very year-based on usage. Secondary suites you left, I found, or fact, or in charge, we're, they're, you know, secondary suites declared in twenty twenty-three. Approximately one in or.
So to that, to that, read nineteen, which were occupied by firefighter, family member?
Nineteen of which were not occupied, no, not occupied. And there's a little difference in secondary suite fees approved, that in our comments or your questions to the last budget actuals, that get to be our seventh, they're, and paid by that time, there's secondary suite fees, they're due in December. So once the, the things are processed, the secondary suite fees are going to be.
Is I'm trying, first, I'm trying to understand, but it's nineteen, we're not occupied by firefighter, what family member? And to everyone else, everybody else. Firefighter? Nothing, isn't that supposed to be more than four?
Fifty-nine less nineteen?
Yeah, it's not, it's not possible. Yes, you have a.
Hit one. Note nine relates to other permits, dumpster demolition, push and driveway. Note ten, which is hall rental, is for. No, what in? And then other rentals, budgeted for rain holes, fire kills, wild fish, sales, and protection service receipts. Note twelve, which is the rental fee, B C ambulance, as I could say the same that the prior year, at least during twenty twenty-third.
So there's no escalation in that, please?
I, somebody else from, I don't know, I'm just kidding. But I can.
Okay, there is some history, some history with that.
So regarding the care, we're basically seeing an algae cap, so, so we're basically seeing, was a short year. We made a program in twenty twenty-two, so twenty twenty-three versus a four years. Twenty twenty-four is just simply because of inflation, the next gives you what you get every single C. LG cap in twenty twenty-two is fifty-one, twenty-three, fifty-one, and we expect fifty-one in twenty twenty-four. So that total, this year for LG cap and then care, historically, which cut off in twenty twenty-one, is that sixty-eight? Or resulting in the reserve for climate action.
In the beginning of the summary, you see what I'm reading, it's nice, that's why I'm saying, I'm giving you numbers, you see, you'll explain.
I will clarify that for.
You know, from what I said to you, there's some people who are facing an interest in how they spend, but I'd like to know this. Three fifty K more.
Yeah, I mean, it is now, right?
Yeah, you said hundred and fifty-nine, seven, eight. Two, ten, one.
All right, I will.
So we have one fifty-nine, and then under sixteen, we have one fifty-six?
Yes, I'll reference, I, I often don't. But I understand where you. Then we're going to fourteen, relating to my C P. Grants, so that's the grant that we're trying for. And that's the clap building and the life they be smart. No, fifteen gap tech funding, and that program terminated in our last payment in twenty twenty-three, so there's no benefit in twenty twenty-four. Other grants relate to. I, I don't have a program grant, candidate grant, fire smart grant, so the one major is the birth. I, twenty twenty-four, our party chief is working with Brontera. They exalted into five hundred thousand dollars in funding. They're fairly confident they will get the funding, and so they'll be utilizing that to fund some of their expenditures and coordinator for the fire department. We'll have a confirmation when they get that sometime this year.
Is that part of the fire safety or is that something else?
There's a, so the, the grant is for a program coordinator, for the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And there's some interest, there's some tools and equipment. We'll get grounded.
It's, it's well for our business.
So that comes upon me, from the four piece, but the business is probably a small number. So you look at general fund registration, you got material, supplies, it's like several. And it goes down by thirty-five hundred dollars, kind of budget from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And then the twenty twenty-three actions was even higher than the budget. What, what's the logic? Why would we budget at five thousand less? What, what, what do you intend to do if you say five thousand dollars? Or how does, sometimes we're not sure how these numbers account for.
Sure, well, again, please, I, I, I'd like to have more information on how that got to that number. So office supplies was thirteen thousand in twenty twenty-three to date. And photocall release was forty-six hundred bucks. It was slightly so higher than we budgeted, so that number can be adjusted up three hundred dollars or so for the photocallings. Office supplies, and we brought that one down. We're just generally proposing, but again, I can see. I can, I can begin to the, the formulas that drive that number, that's why we have.
I'm gonna cross-examine, so you say we, these numbers are actually both up.
Yes.
By sale of what they would need, and entry and saving on previous years.
Yeah, and I, I need to go into the.
I'm not gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm saying it's not a good savings, and I just want to say, oh, both are numbers. They're not, not just taking previous budget, using a formula to forecast it out, and just adding inflation. Sometimes you are.
Sometimes they are, sometimes they were.
But in these kind of cases, you're actually going to know people what they need.
Well, just for office apply, like I, I, I've gone through every single account, and it's actually, you know, it's. But I can buy some items that not going to be replicated in the next year. So those are specific, definitely, can't tell you which ones was our, I have to go back into my notes and then.
It's great that you're looking.
Do you have any more questions like that? Absolutely, please, when you're digesting this, or then to me so that I can buy the. So I don't think, again, going back to December, hasn't been closed off yet, Amber Station is booked on a year, yearly basis. And so this is why actual at zero at the moment. But how we booked this party right now? Budget for next year, gravitation, the five hundred twenty thousand is based on our casual capital assets, according to schedule, that we maintain, protecting, protection for each year. Significant changes saved for professional fees and contract services, projected to decrease by six thousand dollars. So go to notes eight, to look back into these. And last year, we had a budget on hand, maybe thousand or. Four one. Forty one thousand for the audit and then seventy one thousand dollars for contract services. Uh, contract services largely related to estimated estimated costs for provincial advisors that stepped in last year. Um, we didn't actually incur as much as we did budgeted for.
Hold on a second, provincial advisors, how is that relevant here?
Contract services. Uh, just some budgeted cost in twenty twenty three versus what we're budgeting for. That's why the number's gone down because we're not budgeting for provincial advisor or two or three.
So where's this under note eight?
Note eight, yes.
And and what 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 line your contract services? So we didn't pay for any of the provincial advisors beyond the financial officer, right?
Yeah.
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 So it would be that, that would be a solo. Okay.
Um, and then for salaries and benefits, we have a salary.
Before you say, then Joe, I was send this to you previously. The numbers here for the office is ninety five, three hundred. You're tangled below. It's only seventy five, five eighty. Twenty twenty three, and you're on November one, it was ninety five, three hundred. Could send you those in email, so I'm assuming it's seventy five, this is the status.
Yeah, so the the number, the ninety five is driven from the actual town bonds. Uh, the note eight here, I I I think that I think that's hard to read on each. Legal professional. So that would be. I got it probably. Probably with.
If they is correct, my God, then you technically previously sent out in the name of them. In your other forms, actually what you should have raised them, they is up to ninety two.
Thanks, guys. Dollars and benefits. Uh, broken out in note ninety, just on. What based on our event costing. And includes amounts that are based on contract. And anticipated increases in positions based on our Q B negotiations with.
So you just. The twenty twenty three actual. Number we look here. October, I guess, or we need to add on. I'm not with the house. But these numbers include contracted. And probably contractors on the initial basis. Sitting in these positions.
Um, this would. Check on that one. Uh, so the budget. On the twenty twenty actual, again, that number. Um, it's it's not a part of time linked. Um, it's.
So my question is, if someone is putting a state of all on a contract basis. Is it included here or not?
Um, well, you're asking about.
No, it's.
Yeah, so that's not currently in that. Yeah, well, it's not depending on.
Okay, twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three actual.
In the twenty twenty. Where do you include? Um, I don't know.
So then when we have, if we have a. For me, we have a staff, so some sits or subtable here. We should understand those two should provide, we're trying to look at, you know, cost year on year like this. Um, and so someone's putting in a contract, or it should be listed at the staff, the N S J X, I suppose. Otherwise, we're not bringing in that we did. But my other more. Um, general question on this. Um. How is the budget for twenty twenty four calculated on on staffing positions? Is that in those?
Yeah, so it identifies each position and then. As far as the build up, there's. Position, 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 situation. Um, we have a it's pulled back from twenty sixteen all the way to current day, never quite. It's now incorporate new Q B rates, cost level increases, it's also baked in. Um, estimations each year of what, you know, Q B increases would be. Um, so that when we actually find out the contract, we're not touching on one three years of. Or thinking stuff. Um, the. Salary costs are for salary.
Okay.
And I can share that in or anything, but I would suggest that that would be something that's a matter of course, since it doesn't. Identifies specifically the rules and pay rates, so I don't know that is incorporated.
Yeah, so what jumps out here in admin systems? Which, now, if you look at the other positions in the city, they are about three percent, which, excuse me, is rates of salary increases. And this position jumps out significantly, probably twenty three budget to twenty four budget. But then in the notes below, you say that this is based on one full time administrator and one part time. Correct, so we haven't adjusted any of the hours there, so that. That. I can, but that's. One that just kind of.
I would suggest that we go through the actual buildup model.
Yeah.
And we see.
So I assume you need all the meetings, we'll get that in the next meeting.
Great, good. All of these sorts of questions are perfect for the next meeting. Where you're going to disentangle all the pieces and you're going to, that's the purpose of that.
You might be getting a lot of it done too much. You might be standing in the meeting.
Well, you'll never get done till midnight because you got a lot of stops. Yeah, so again, this is just to orient you to what's coming. All right, so all these questions. Uh, primarily for the for the for the core budget, save up for the core budget discussion, otherwise it'll be too short. And same the supplementals.
Yeah, I'll stop asking questions.
Well, can I just throw one in here if it hadn't been covered already and I missed it on on the C A O costs? The twenty twenty two actual at four twelve? That just.
I would need an explanation too.
Yeah, that makes no sense to me.
I heard that happening.
Yeah, and and also the C A O costs of fifty six and change for this year. How that came about doesn't make any sense to me either.
That's basically what I've talked, so here is my supplemental request for training and professional development to the note of eleven. Um. No, that's sorry, that's not that. Um. Next is by law. Generally, someone complex primary in the last year. Um, and then went through the notes. A couple of communications, I pretty much. Then we have a contract enforcement fees regarding the district bank for verification keys for parking tickets. And then cost costs for already parked tickets. Salaries and benefits, similar to the primary. For anybody being, because I'm one season long, my full time offer, you can temporarily since long. One. I will see one there. Council budget for the map. Going to the chamber, they're really twenty twenty three.
So sorry, sorry, Joe, it's just some ways get past that I wanted to just understand. The parking meter fees, can I just circle you back there? Any explanation for why there a third of what was budgeted? Can I anticipate that this was note three? On page nine of the package.
If you could, all this will be, all of this will be unpacked in the end. The base budget discussion. Just to remind you, this is just to orient you to what's in the binder. Sure. Otherwise, you won't be, you won't get through it all. That's a perfect question for for that committee of all.
Okay, turn from council.
So Ross, just to understand you then. We are to go through this, essentially not ask too many questions. Put our questions together and bring them to the next meeting. Yeah, so why are we here? I guess is what I'm asking, I mean, I've gone through it, I've got the questions and I want them answered.
Right, so I explained why we're here right at the beginning of the meeting, I set all that out, so today. Is to orient you to what's in this binder, what the process is going to be, ask for any clarification around the process. Um, get council's appetite with regard to whether you want to compress meeting schedule and so on and so forth. Today is really for Joe to walk through what's in here. Then you're going to take this away and over the next two weeks, you're going to do a deep dive individually. You're going to ask Joe any questions that pop up in the interim. That with with regard to sort of clarifying any question marks. So that when you come to the to the next committee of the whole meeting. To discuss the core budget, you're prepared to do a deep dive into just these questions. So the best way to deal with this now is just to link the questions to sort of, I'm confused, what, you know, where's this section or?
Yeah, that that would mean a whole lot of emails for Joe. Wouldn't it make sense just to say, here's a question we got and Joe makes a note of it and then brings it to the next meeting?
You know, I so you can you can do it, run this however, or you can facilitate this however works best for council. We've designed it this way because we figured that this is the most efficacious way of delivering this, but it's entirely up to you. Joe's not prepared to do a deep dive into any of these questions.
At the moment, I get that, but if we give him the questions or if he's got a quick answer, then then we can move on and make our next meeting.
Up to council.
Yeah. All right, onwards.
On council. Uh, but it's. Too much on capital twenty twenty three budget, twenty twenty three actuals at seventy five to November. Uh, sort of about the on track with budget, once we close off the year and end of this December. Uh, election costs, so one item here, and that was. That's different from. Remember the fact that we present them. So the by election costs were a a unusual and unexpected item. And there was an election reserve. Um, when I would shift reserves, that was eleven thousand five hundred. So in this version. At least at that reserve. That cost that cost of. By election. By next year, next four years.
So that accounts for the sixty five hundred?
That accounts for, yeah, why, um, I, the. The device, the device, basically, yeah, where we're trying to build it back up. Uh, for for election, building up a reserve for election costs.
So the sixty five hundred is us building up a reserve toward the elections of any kind in the future.
And I can imagine the company will also lose.
And that we're going to have a chief by. Yeah.
Uh, so the other one that. Conventions and conferences, so.
The. Council knows this, really, there are lots of conferences, the L G, the U B C M, so on and so forth. These are all. I would argue or suggest important networking opportunities as well as they are. Uh, sort of opportunities to 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 deepen knowledge. Um, build contacts and so on and so forth, they're very valuable. But you, if you look at the previous years, there was not much money set aside for this at all. Um, so when it comes to the base budget. Uh, meeting next, I think this is an important conversation. For council to have around, you know, how many members of council should go, what are the key? Uh, conferences that should attend.
Your point will be your own lines, which you only went to the next meeting.
For me?
To your point, we could be here all night this year for the next meeting.
Yeah, for the next meeting, yeah.
All right, so yeah, that's just in note six without the other figure. From the topic, but it's but I agree, yeah. Uh, moving on to emergency services. Um, it's going to be. In this country, it's one of the twenty twenty three. But they'll come around. And then a search from Raffi. Um. So that's news that some shared. Um, there is one item that. But a simple naturally fast car, which is professional fees for product services. Uh, for a super rare coordinator. For an increase in the job is not. So. This is more kind of fluctuate down and down for emergency delivery costs. Five hundred three. But it's not practically going to go down all day when we do urine entries, we allocate some platform costs across various departments. Um, but basically, I gotta take a look. Based on especially to their meeting, both that will be a little bit higher for living costs or not. Uh, we're on half a point three budget, but our actuals are a little. Uh, one thing to discuss. And all of this, obviously, all of it relates to the janitorial pass control. Costs. Neutral equipments, we're not having any more police departments. Down for twenty twenty four. Uh, our utilities cost because PC hydro again, so you're in the next year, you could spread this. Hydro cost among the. Fire is a larger budget. A. Six. Of your package. Um, so as far as the whole micro budget of three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Um, it's less than a twenty twenty three budget. Um, and based on track the twenty twenty two and twenty one actuals. Uh, again, twenty twenty three, there's still costs that were reprocessed in December. Um. So when we get into the nitty gritty on this one. The fire department. Apparently to your capital reclasses. Uh, for instance, the fire engine, there is one that's not been included in this budget, which is a request for such that housing for volunteer firefighters. Um, but that's discussed in the supplementals. That will be requesting guidance from the council. And I think that will once you, but there's now a for budgeting for that.
So is is that your note relating to shit feelings?
No, 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 now I'm just. Spinning our pretty, your report chatting with the budget supplementals for fires, which is not included in this budget. Um, there's an ask for after fifty thousand dollars subsides about volunteer firefighters housing in my space. Um, it's not being included, and that's just basically a good ask. Um, is there an appetite to actually buy that or not? Um, they might have, but that's one thing that's at the very end of your package.
Okay, all right, sorry, sorry. Can I just ask about this fire? Oh, so did I hear you to say that you you're supposing that some supplementals will get approved, including a one point three million dollar fire engine? Uh, you then supposing how that will get funded through debt? Did I hear you say that is that is reflected in the twenty four budget?
Yes, that is.
So the interest payments haven't gone up?
Um, we, so yeah, I got an allocated interest specifically to that project to the. Fire department in this in a term, that's a really good point. Um, right now, it's kind of mostly just been, right now, it's in the in the industry, it's like the Ecom radio costs, something like that. Um, what we bought our and pretty worried the increase in interest would be going, it is currently sitting. Um, in the general interest account and then we allocated that year. Uh, so. If we did buy a fire truck, we had additional interest costs, we'd be able to get the fire card. That's the.
Okay, but we don't see it now.
All right.
So generally, yeah, there are those. Effects type functions that you assume you got in twenty twenty four, right?
Um, everything that's been asked for, aside from that fifty thousand dollars. Um, everything that's been asked for, uh, aside from that, uh, fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the monitored firecrackers, it's an operational item, not a capex item. Um, has been included in there and then we go through the uh, capital capax request. Um, we have a budget supplemental for each of those items, uh, asking, presenting a business case for why the request being made.
Forget that. Sorry, back to my question. So you say on the firefighter side, all the supplementals are in the base already as if we approve.
Yes, and that's just so you can see what would happen.
But I mean, I mean, the fire. So firefighting.
Are not public works.
So the thing.
And so. That's the only color again, you uh, you just want to click the hook on the, okay, tab nine of your uh, your package there, that adds all of the uh, the cap.
And I'm sorry. But you said all of this is in the value.
Uh, yes, uh, yeah, it's not, if you go to um, your uh, very second tab, which is a schedule A. And um, you look at the. That generates all of the costs, uh, on that.
So you have some color coded ones in the package. So you've included the high priority and the medium?
Yeah, everything.
And the low priority as well?
I sorted that just for uh, I have a visual.
Okay.
Uh, but that basically keeping off of what we have from uh, nine. Uh, which all.
So, so, James, I've actually scheduled it. I mean, we have ten, I'm not finding, we do a line item, you're saying. There's all those expenses.
So if you go down to work at bottom and says cash items not included and annual surplus profit deficit. Um, this is my name is.
Okay, yeah, okay, I've got that, all right.
Three, five, one, and put it down now. Um, the second page of that sheet, the very ending there, I said that same number, it's about the total of all complex expenditure requests that have been made. Um, and uh, solidate it, um, or.
Okay, then sorry, I was, sorry, just. We're going to work, what I'm trying to stand is, when I'm looking at the expenditures section, often, which add up to five point nine million. Um. Expenditure section, that has no capex.
No, and that says, is there operational items? Capex is uh, capitalized.
Okay, okay, so when I'm looking at this. Sheet here with the fire and stuff.
Here in the operation items, there's no cost in here. Um, if I.
Okay, there's no, I don't get.
Sound of caps, it's included in the cabinet.
No consideration of what it might cost to fund it, like, for example, that.
Exactly.
That would be added to.
We haven't made a decision, everybody dropped the server.
It's not even, it's not even, right, you end it, and then when I really thought I was, he was. And the expenditure side, that would be.
Yeah.
And front schedule A, you, below the line, you. Sorry, all right, all right.
Um. Uh, communications, that's part of our part, um, mostly economics, this time, I take a bill from the state. Uh, this is what I do, uh, when we talk to you about interest and uh, must be sure how we're gonna do. We're gonna find, how we're gonna fund it, this would have to be this out. Insurance premiums are, it's not nice to include insurance and I raise so, so that's basically all we need. Um, maintenance costs, uh, are kind of whatever they're typical mentioned about. Basically. I didn't. Burn building maintenance and then emergency building, building fire costs in a prior year to the budget, that no costs were expended in the current year, so it's slugged. The plan, and it'll be up to discussion in the operational deep dive, if there's actually something that needs to be reported there. Cherryls and equipment, very similar to last year, um, SBA costs, um, uh. And it's a linear, the model rate here, my title and equipment, uh. You know, that's who, uh, about as much detail on what specific categories and benefits are for your review or understanding. Um, and uh, we can go into many specific questions when we actually add the deep dive, at least, generally though, it is, this is. This is just the public information, uh, twenty twenty two, our services for fire study, uh, for twenty seven thousand dollars, we're not expecting any surveys from. Uh, the next year, so that's that year. Salaries and benefits is broken out, uh, for um. Uh, by the various categories here, and this is based um, on, in discussions with fire, um, and uh. Uh. Best estimate of, um, what, uh, it could look like for twenty twenty four.
So Joe, on that one, why do we have such a huge jump there? I mean, if I go down to note eight. I'm seeing actuals of eighty eight thousand.
So there's a uh, a pay to volunteers, um, once in June, once in December, so there's another cost that's going to come in for the year. This number will come up, uh, this is basically, the one forty three is actually less than we budgeted from last year, and it's kind of around what was actually heard in twenty twenty two.
So this is the fire volunteer ship payment? That's jumping it up so dramatically?
Yeah, we have an A W this time.
But even so, if I have you was thirteen, it's a lot less than what she must do, what this fire guy is.
Right, eight, uh, chief, and then again, remember this, why not transfer everything, plus a larger sum for the bomb teams?
Yeah.
I expect this number to be approximately, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand.
I think what Marcus is pointing out, you look at five ways to want to ship payments, that line item, number eight. Because fifty thousand, thirty nine thousand drops to thirteen, that's half here, it's going to double to twenty six, it's still way less.
It's gonna be.
And forty five.
And then, and then the budget goes down to forty five, so we must be planning on. And for the next firefighting staff, if we can find, this is something else that needs to stop.
The committee of the whole meeting coming up, where you do a deep dive into these numbers.
I think we have that last time. Oh, happy to, it was actually a drive of. Post girlfriend. All right. Uh, that's definitely a good question, uh, but I can maybe some more detail, uh, on how that was built up. Training professional developments, um. So the green house, while our training, uh, just against do a PC, their costs we're paying for. And then utilities is just BCI. Um, parts, big line here, actually, maintenance. So, um, uh, you know, to, uh, there's a some budget for cost for approximately a hundred thousand dollars for rounds of terrors on the jetty. Um, I discussed with Carl, uh, so we previously budgeted for not spend twenty thousand dollars for each possible digit, which I assume is what we can offset to part of that cost for the jetty.
Assuming the jetty gets funded, yeah.
Yes, you get it.
So these are two different things.
There are two different things, uh.
I think you shouldn't, twenty two, that would confuse them, right?
Yeah.
We'll discuss it.
Yeah.
So that's the main difference, um, everything else, reading my contract, so, and benefits. This one, uh, was going to be a discussion point that we, uh, I mean. Further into, uh, what works, um, salary, uh, allocations to various departments, historically, it's been a set percentage. X, Y, Z, and I trust that four departments, um, probably some of it, but that, uh. Um, okay, well, this maybe could be refined, that would be better, so to reflect the budgets. Um, I, it's certain, what I've seen in uh, budgets and actuals is effectively, we budgeted for total hours available for public works. And then that number, um, is generally on budget, um, how it gets allocated across departments just varies really on, um, I. Timesheets that, uh, our work submits. Uh, it's where that money actually ends up getting unbooked, so.
So the inducement code of timesheet, yeah.
We. And I believe that was, um, I had, I might not, I might have to have, but I'm in the subsequent slides. But generally, our budgeted costs for public works versus an actual are quite. Close. Is how you allocate among departments can change just depending on where actually we're spending the time. Um. Now we go to planning, um, today. Uh, our building inspector, uh, so that's, uh, his part is. Training professional development, uh, you can completely, we, we, for training and professional development costs for both, um, uh. With other and security, um, in twenty twenty two, that's a one, or one, twenty one. Uh, salary benefits are increased based on cold time, uh. Building inspector, compared to twenty twenty four, the top means twenty twenty two plus inflation. Um, twenty twenty three was low because we didn't have a full perspective for an hour of.
You knew, you know, not full time.
Well, I haven't, but. We didn't have one at all.
Well, are you anticipating more hours worked by the building inspector?
We're insulating, um, having hours equivalent, uh, to twenty twenty two, which were the whole year's worth of work on inflationary enough. Um, so we can see this ten thousand or eleven thousand dollars because in care to bear the budget in twenty twenty three, we budgeted for not having somebody, so we're fine, so budget, we didn't have anybody. Uh, spending time on public works, uh, Colin, you'll read a time in and say comments. Um, so, uh, significant changes of maintenance, uh, go through that, uh, I was cutting cable, breaking down changes in maintenance and changes in professional contract keys. Um, there are supplemental requests in that. Uh, and that's primarily where we're focused on, um. Uh, but again, everything does have, I know with the, some description of what the, we're sorry, we're showing the cast. And we look to maintenance. Twenty twenty three actual versus, um, budget was significantly higher and that was due to, um. Uh, roads. Um, and bridge maintenance, um. So Rose, uh, it part of discussions for the funding of capital, uh, last year. When we're done debating whether or not to buy a fire truck last year, or if something else, that money that nine hundred ninety thousand dollars that we received, which is uncertain, we could spend a day maybe we wanted. Decision was made, we did not buy a fire truck and to use that money to maintain our. So that rose off, um, uh, last year, three hundred thirty one thousand, primarily is to a V eight laptop and, uh, their rotating activities and. Um, there may be some road pavings, but we're not expecting second degree. Um, so currently, ten again, if you're based, uh.
You know, not, you know, pretty bad as a maintenance item into the operation, right?
Yes.
But clearly in previous year, we did.
So that's the, we understood thing on the presentation of, um, that, uh, uh, capital request. A lot of those capital requests were a mixture of actual maintenance, operating items.
For example, we six roads, road paving, we didn't do road paving in previous years. Nine hundred thousand dollars wasn't, two, two. No, eight, we skipped one year, anyway, the twenty one and twenty two should have a couple hundred thousand dollars in weight panel. Which means that we checked the same way.
Nice.
But they, there is not here, so obviously we. We, we need to use differently now.
That's exactly right, we, it was sort of this funny capital project thing that's not actually capital project. And so, Joe, this year, we're going to present maintenance items, as maintenance items, which is in, uh, the operating budget.
The other one that Josh had is the bridge in maintenance. So you're gonna, they're in the operation, right?
So it's technically, it is maintenance, not capex.
Yes.
But then to bring everything into a, a parallel bucket by the years, it's, it's going to be hard work. So maybe, you know, for prior years, you have to look at the bottom line, um, because some of those, almost all of the expenditure that we did was really maintenance, we didn't build anything new.
It was a bit of a. Philosophical discussion, at least, I would consider, because once I get into maintenance dungeon, then in future years, all we're going to do is, look at last year, yeah, it should have gone up five or six percent because of this inflation. And so that's going to be, it's never going to be charged, which I'm not saying that is the wrong way to do it, but it's something we can actually consider, so.
I think there needs to be.
A thousand dollars for bridge, bridge of our claims, which I think we need to lift and, you're on. Um, in future years, that would just roll through council and need to question it.
You just put six percent on it, yeah, no, I, I think there needs to be a section like you see here in note A, uh, um, under section seven. Where there is a flexible section every year. It doesn't just get inflated for the first year.
But where actually you ask you, what do you expect?
Specific projects, what are they?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that would be a, the better compromise, I think, so we still do get to question. The major maintenance items, the, the deficient upgrades, for example, that's what the bridge is, right, we're all deficient for a year.
Okay, so there has to be a, uh, sort of the industry standard or municipal standard that they go by, can you? Yes. In China, you're not to see whether we're following them, whether it goes in capital expenditures or operational. Yeah, I can not provide that, uh.
What's the crystal ball for?
To keep that side, I would be on. Um, so yeah, and then the, uh, remains again, um, is. Bridge maintenance, um.
Thirty six point two, I think.
So the priority.
Three years over.
Here's and slides are basically, um, I am, uh, the power of the prior year and I'm glad it's been two actual, it's been twenty three. This would be, um, after we get to the same, it's. Contract services engineering is a larger component. Uh, we do have budget supplementals for these items. Uh, we're discussing what they are, why we're asking for it. Um, so we have hydro, uh, metric analysis, uh, repeating fire hydrants. Uh, I don't need to go through all of these, everything can be covered in this column here, um, in your budget supplementals. Um.
Well, not all, Joe. So repainting fire, as councilors just said, I'd like that job.
Yeah.
Uh, that's A and B services and and as an adjunct, they will repaint the fire. We're overdue, we're three years overdue on both A and B services on all seventy two firehikers. We're out of time, uh, we, we have to bring in an outsider and and they will do it, we think for around five hundred dollars on it.
That's not just for painting, that's for.
Service, that's, that's for breaking it down, lubing, uh, newer rings, you know, the whole thing.
So Joe, you're going to have to dial it up to more of a general overview. In order to get across the finish line.
All right, okay, so, um, uh, detail, um, what the specific variances for this cost, uh, which is significant. Uh, so if there's any further questions, uh, that are outside of what's divided, I'd like to see much of the package, please, uh, package those for. Uh, you can send me a question or I, I put together your list and then we'll discuss that in our operational meeting, folks, yeah.
By the way, if I could also add, if, if you could add your question, I think it's really useful around this budget. It's useful to, uh, include all council, so that they get to hear, we will disseminate as much information as possible.
Salaries and benefits that is in my, um, my model, uh, that we've been using over another years, we don't, uh. Um, I. Liberate category, um, that could be us for, um, inflation or use. In terrible, uh, categories, um. Training professional development, year to year costs that are required to be done, um, and so far, we haven't. Need for anything for courses, I don't know if they have, of course, taken, so we're probably to probably. And then, seriously, this hydro, sewer is very insistent, you have the problem here, it's, but it generally does not move. Except for inflation. Uh, looking down again, every single, I don't know, between light and clear, it's from, uh, the most part of it, but, uh, a detail of, uh, where the. Um, mine items are and what the, uh, what the, where they do, but this is a very consistent budget for sewer. Solid waste, again, also very, very consistent, um, and, uh. We have notes for usually items, um. Nothing really off notice would be completely different from the prior year, um. And we don't expect any significant changes in transition for.
So solid waste has a next, um, installation tools in the contract, then?
Not, not, not as far as I know, they say they roll, they're happy to roll out of the contract. I assume that means on the same rates.
Then why, why focus this on?
Probably prudent.
There are. There are the real standards and then. What? Uh, the, the increase in solid waste? Uh, the, the increase in solid waste?
Yeah.
That's flat, uh, flat prehand inflation, that's all. Yeah, I mean, we can chat about that, but we need to go.
They were, what I'm saying is actually the rest is going to, they're going to fret, right? Like right in here, it's a sugar. I.
You can get that up. Yeah. Uh. And water. Again, there's a similar, um, I have some items to, um, reclassify here, for example. Carl, that, that I'm effectively, um, and then go, we're going to work in there, so we're here, uh, all the words. So, uh, two items, we've got is maintenance, it's done, really, um, it doesn't, that kind of like. But a coding error, basically, uh, so a part of this is going to go up here and it's going to be basically flat, but that was, that was a good catch by Carl. Went through, um, the, uh, for memory draft, so the next version of this, that's going to fly now.
So you're going to fly that the amortization as well?
But amortization will be, uh, both as a book yet for twenty twenty two. Um, and that concludes operating budgets. Um, so now we're going to see the twelve thousand requests, I just got it, and put it back to, um, not, uh, expectations. So this, uh, was the budget for last year for capital expenditures, the budget for the third year and that type of, uh, is scheduled a total amount of capital. Um, additionally, uh, that key map, um, that was provided, again, I was sixty five one, it's just for the foundation purposes on, uh. Preference priorities, preliminary. Um, so this is actually, uh, you can take a look at, uh, you know, what, um, the proposed tie, we all need. Uh, but effectively, what's scheduled? The schedule. Um, and so I'm going to concentrate on, on the, the priority schedule, um, so we have, again, fire trial, each part. Uh, how we tank, uh, and so these two numbers is a million dollars together, survey and replacement. Uh, scan, uh, honoring, and what have you, uh, we went through this rudely, um, in the, uh, slide show at the beginning. Um. But I think I love the time on this. Um, I want you to do.
You know, we come now understanding, but this is. Don't be too upset, and we go back to the previous page, we are twenty twenty three, twenty two. So if something was, but in twenty twenty three. The work was made, you're going to do this, you were then planning it over in ten, as with the second line of.
Yeah.
Your schedule.
Rebudgeted.
You've rebudgeted, okay. So what confused me was, for example, you have a bridge next, bridge joint, that was three hundred thousand in twenty twenty three. I know we didn't do that in twenty twenty four, but that's where you now move the, the main thing that are inside.
Correct.
Okay.
And then there are other items.
And then it's, then the weight.
Roads, roads, and the sinks, another one, yeah.
But something like the next line of that, you're ninety thousand in the survey, a review place, uh, survey and construction, you're a huge group in place. That we didn't do. That should be in this column as well, that's not.
Uh, I'm supposing we don't do that project.
Supposing we don't do it.
In lieu of another one, which is ocean view design, which is in there somewhere for a hundred thousand.
So then they could get an asterisk and slide back into our surplus.
Correct.
And in a few years' time, when you try to get around to it, you should remember that we tax for ourselves.
I won't forget. Here it is. I brought it with me, just in case.
Joe, are you ready to go to the supplementals?
Yes, so that concludes the end of, um, the, uh, uh, package, uh, that was distributed to council. Uh, if you go to tab ten, um, we have the budget later on table, uh, included in your, um, budget packages are supplemental forms, um. Toward, um, the content and, uh, by department. Um, we start with the themes by the line, they, uh, charge department for a car engine, first stage, uh, under tab ten.
Hold it, Joe, here's what I, here's what I would propose, there's a lot of these supplementals. Uh, the goal or the intention was to have everyone here to walk you through. I think it's a far better way to do it, it would be far better to just do that when you're dealing with the supplementals rather than try to remember the explanation for three weeks. So rather than go to the details, I think it's better just to leave you to, they're quite self-explanatory. Uh, and then we'll have.
Try to achieve to meet you.
Yeah, exactly, and have them, so you can ask them questions. That's where the rubber meets the road, is in the details of the Q and A around these things. So, uh, as I say, based on that, I suggest that I would, you don't spend any time on reading, weighing through these things.
Yeah, well, we haven't seen it before, so we wouldn't.
Right.
All right. So. That brings us to the end, anything else?
There is. I have. Few, which is A V I C C call for resolutions.
All will guess something. At the end of our package. And now that's for the summer conference and that, yes, you know that.
A V I C C, oh, it's not A V I C C, actually, it's the wrong, it's the wrong, it's not A V C M, isn't that fair? This is the low, the lower mainland local government association.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so for every, so everyone can hear what this is. Um. Municipalities have a lot of asks of the province, and there's different ways those asks come out. The U B C M is sort of a clearinghouse for all of the asks from municipalities, regional districts around the province. They ultimately are the, are the curators of the, the, these, these, this, this long list of. Endorsed resolutions that municipalities provide, requesting the province do this, that, or the next thing. In, it is, there's two ways U B C M. Which is the Union of B C Municipalities, for those that don't know. Uh, there's two ways that they, they consolidate this information. One is that they receive these on the fly, on the floor during the U B C M conference. Uh, the other way is it follows the, the chapter, the local government chapter stream. So in this case, it's the lower mainland local government association. That's where council, like Lions Bay Council, would have a number of issues that they want the province to deal with. And they will, they will, um. Um. Well, through the C E O, prepare res, draft resolutions to take to the L G M A, or the L M, L G A. The conference, to see if they will endorse them. You know, that, you know, whereas, whereas, whereas that the province, um. Provide funding for emergency equipment ac- acquisition, that sort of thing. Um, if the local chapter endorses it and it gets passed, then they automatically move it on to the U B C M. And then once it gets past the U B C M, it moves on to the province's recommendations. Sometimes the province actually pays attention. And not always, not often, actually.
Yeah.
But it is an avenue available to this council. So this is on here because the deadline for, um, these resolutions, I've sent you the, the supporting information is in early February sometime, I forgot the date. Um, so I, the ask here is.
February twenty eighth, it's not really.
February twenty eighth, so my ask here is that council turn their, your mind to issues of a provincial nature such that. Lions Bay would want to advocate by a resolution. And then i- if there's a desire, you sort of would ultimately, as a council, tell me what your priorities are, and then I would try, create some draft resolutions for you, bring them back. To vet them and away they go. So that's what this is, it's a heads up.
If I, if I can jump in, um, I, there was a resolution brought forward by. A couple of municipalities on the island in regards to alkaline hydrolysis, which is essentially water cremation. It came. Some months ago, and I will bring it back to the next council meeting, hopefully for adoption to endorsement. Uh, so it won't be anything we will need to draft, it's already been drafted, but I do look for some support on that, I think it's important. And second comment of the evening, I really appreciate the format of the council of the whole this evening with the orientation. I found it helpful. And I like the, I appreciate the time to digest all of this information before we're asked to sort of, you know, make decisions on it, so. Look forward to that and I will, I still have the resolution sitting on my desk at work, I will forward it to all members of council. To have another look at in the coming days. With the hope that maybe we can have some consensus at our next council meeting on the twenty third. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, anything else before we open up to follow up questions? No, okay. Any questions, uh, Marina, if there's anyone online who would like to ask a question? Uh, Joe, you have to minimize that.
I don't see anyone at this time.
Okay, thank you for, from residents for attending and thanks to the councillors and, uh, thank you, Joe. And Ross. What a crowd. Okay, I want you to. Jared, boot. Second. All favor, yes. Oh, Jared, when you.
Yeah.